Good day and we thank you for the support and the charity that you're doing. And I'm so thankful for what you did. Father, we just ask that you continue to be with us, just give us such understanding and most of all, this is the leadership that we need to do. Father, we just ask that you be with each and every one. Father, we're so thankful for you. Father, we just lift up our families and most of all, the ones in our counties that are sick and ill. We just ask that you just continue to be with them. And Father, just cut those who've lost life once this way, and Father, just continue to watch over and just protect. Father, thank you again for the blessings in your gifts and opportunity you invited us to have. And Father, all these things we ask you because you're precious and poetical and you should have some pride. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which stands, in its own accord, in its own court, liberty and justice for all.
If I'm sure changes. First, if we could add Jersey Diggins, below Tracy Jones, so that we can do more updates. We can also add, it was here that we didn't have an audit update from TD, that's number nine. They'll be trying us later. If we could strike under 211, the manager reporting, if we could strike the approved agency's request information form, places with approved, you helped to move it to be. And then if we could add again, which is surplus 29K transit van. That's everything.
Do you have a motion to approve the engagement?
Then.
We have a budget to the group, we need to run a workshop with Randy for all. And we had this really important grant many annual in the future with this new workshop session. We basically are going to look at other county models as far as whether it be county handled or if we kind of elevated certain which possibly make shares department. So we're continuing to work on that, go with our decisions and some progress by next. And number seven, Tracy Johnson, Green, I think that's the place on the agenda. I'll let the guys work with that one, but like a half ago, I had asked that we don't get any better allocation or I guess, or so they were able to get a building which is large enough to have storage because they keep things like this and like hygiene products, clothes, all those things in storage. And then they're also going to be able to make like a small kitchen area in another part of it. Help to have a place where they can like serve their meals that they would prefer to do. And this is in lieu of having to close their location, which possibly is. And so I was hoping that we would be able to find funds somewhere to replace that $2,000, $2,000. Of course, that would be, I was hopeful that we could replace that $2,000. I'd pay that way they can use it for other expenses. I know they're going to have a lot of expenses as far as putting the walls in that building and get the builder. I guess I want to mention how they grab one for some of those. So I guess a little reflection to be. Do we have the funds and does this not be a question? Do you know the year that we have a fund that we could? Would insert a partner here and we have suggestions for that. Yeah. Like if they were to make a good investment, so it's not a self. So I guess I'm looking at a mention to maybe $2,000 into the declaration. So I'll make that motion. I did tell him that we, I always hope we got a deal with that. So I'll do that motion by the same. Could you kind of give us an update on the presentation?
I know, we just want to ask for the fact right now.
220,000 pages. So I expect you to hear please.
Hi. Mark permission to take down all of that on the tennis courts. And today skate park there, just a public free skate park. Probably a good opportunity for anybody, especially kids. Already my family and two other families already go out and skate one night a week. And we have to transport our stuff back and forth because we don't have a place to leave it. These courts get very little use. Seem like five people on the five years. And I'm not asking for money. I don't want any money. I want to either get donations or pay for it. So it would be wood ramps, not concrete, so it'd be movable. If at any point there is decided that it couldn't be used, I can take everything down and transport it off the tennis court. I would specifically like it to be at the tennis court. Like the only other place would be the depot's street basketball court. The benefit of doing it at the tennis court is there's a playground there. So if you have a family that has kids that are not old enough to ride, they can play on the playground. And you wouldn't have to split your family. And that's probably maybe because of this much situation. So I don't want any money. I just want permission to do it. It's all the basketball.
I appreciate your interest to do that. So can you see age?
Well, I mean, first thing we need to check on is liability insurance, just because it's a different use of the syllable. But what I may suggest that is if it's okay with the board is I'll reach out to Kirby and we can sit down with Thomas, our rec director. And if I talk enough, let that good, my kids get it. It's potential to get it moving forward. That's probably the best.
Thank you.
If the board, yeah, and let's have some discussions about it with the rec department as well. Let's see on what long-term plans are. And if it can't come in, I think it's a good idea. So regardless of the outcome there, just talk about it in general, we're the nominee of main.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
So Randy was in touch with you and then he doesn't make the policy, I think that's very important.
There are questions.
Have you received your state work?
TV will be first round chair.
Oh. Okay, so that Mr. T.
Just want to give you an update on the 2024 audit, drift in the process of doing our planning right now. And the, or we can often issue it sometime in the latter part of January, first month of April. For 2026, for 2024. Then we plan to do the fast track and get your 2025 right after that as quickly as possible. Hopefully this time next year, then you'll be on on 2026 as well. Any questions? Is that time?
Well, so will in 2020, physically 2026 audit, the executive needs to have it finished, completed by December 31st of 2026.
That's fine. I understand.
So yes, okay, or pre- audits next year.
Yeah, it's definitely, I've talked with Jesse basically. We have a lot of audits coming up, obviously, which we set to a big year.
Year of the hour. That's good phrasing.
That would put you on the fast track, but we want to get you guys caught up. And I think that's a good time to ask for some examples, get that going and get you guys caught up. And get you on the, and then we'll be done with restrictions, whatever, and get you guys back to it.
We got you need the little pieces, Roger.
What's this there?
You can find it in your booth anywhere. I just wanted to come this evening and just give you some good news, give you some updates and to tell you thank you. This is the season of Thanksgiving. And as we left our place to come over here tonight, we had the community gathered in one of our buildings, building boxes for the community itself for Thanksgiving and being able to hand those out to the community tomorrow evening. And we're excited about that. It was so cool watching everybody just come in there and build those things and put them together and get ready to share with one another. So I wanted to tell you thank you. You know, I think the longer that you live and the more opportunities you have to be involved with leadership yourself, the more you understand what a little bit what it's like for you guys up there. So I do understand a little bit about what it's like to be up there. But I wanted to give you some reports on what your money and what the community's money, tax money has been doing at Five Point Center over the last year. We have been able to put out 1,680 PFAT boxes, which represents 5,208 individuals. We have completed 480 emergency boxes. And this is people that just walk in off the street and need something just immediately. That number has increased at least 35% over the last two months. It is getting more and more real out there. Thus far, we have supplied 20,000 meals in the community this year. We have had an increase in our digital literacy classes. We are now doing five classes a week in the community. We're going to Sticova, to Grand County Library, two at our facility and one in Grand County Senior Center. So that is really growing and expanding. We have had a 60th G O recovery community podcast. That's our recovery community center that does peer support. From there, as you know, we have also been able to partner with Grand County and the funds for the Oakwood Settlement Funds and that work is going on. We will have a billboard that will be going up soon in the anti-stigma campaign for that. So be watching for it. It'll be right across to the dollar store down there. Great big one. That'll be happening. We have one that in this past month is launched to rehab. We have four that is in, that are in classes weekly at the, at the recovery center. We've been able to partner with DSS to be able to provide parenting classes through the Life Choice Pregnancy Center that is also on our campus. We have had six people that have been regulars for the Pregnancy Center over the last year. And if you're not familiar with what they do, they take expecting parents, mother and father's boat, and they give them training and they have a earned you learn program where they can get diapers, car seats, needs of that nature that they need for their children and also be able to get the training that's required for DSS. For you just because they want to know that. And that's really good to know. Our client choice program, which is, I don't know if you're familiar with that, we just started doing that. People can come in and they can choose what they want. Instead of having a free pass box, they get to come in and choose what they want from our inventory and take that with them. So far this year, we have done 960 households, which represents 2,692 individuals. So we've been putting food out there. Your dollars have been going to good work. And we want to thank you for that again, because we could not and do not want to try to do it alone. We did want to also remind you that there is a great increase in our community, as it is obviously all over our nation. The needs seem to be growing every day and the funds are dwindling every day, as I know that each of you are aware of this well. And I want to thank you for your partnership. I want to thank you for your generosity. And I want to thank you and I want to welcome you to come and join us sometime. We're there almost all the time. Almost all the time. So we'd love to see you there sometime and thank you. Thank you.
That's why we do.
Well, thanks. For our goal. Yes, we had another.
First station.
We had, yes, we had somebody come in. We had been able to supply 100 boxes in the community and each box could feed 10 people. And the community was so generous that we're going to be able to do 150 boxes. So that represents 1,500 people, 1,500 meals, just for that one drive. So we have a community that tries to look after one another and we should be thankful for that.
Absolutely.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Chair. I should have talked to you in my report, if you want. We're sitting, starting with number one. I actually got a survey for Aldridge Land Survey is working for that survey. Hold up on the screen and both of you were out actually today working too. I had the town mark utilities, so they're picking those up through the survey to show that obviously what's on site, but also for our technical engineer. They're about 60% done with the survey and the topo is pretty good shape, obviously, as you can see. Maybe they still be able to read it. The one thing they're having a problem with working on is this boundary here. As you can see, their research, no records, ownership is found.
Mine.
For the property is what they're going to look.
It's up for grabs, everybody. I claim it. It's mine. I'll get these back to us.
So Manager Cody knows a little bit about it and I think maybe Terry Coward had some things to talk about. Right now, that's the kind of the thing they're working through and might, might be the agreement in place. Some of that extends down through here. I think it's obviously needed towards where the science building and central offices, it's a little more defined. That's probably, probably going to happen to have something that is going to go into that area. He was, he also told me today on the phone and he was confident about this line where the library is. But finding that, that, this piece of property here where the elementary school and the old lunch building, the kindergarten, he's still working on trying to do that. So Terry Coward, did you want to add anything to that?
Well, that was more things I wanted to talk to you about. There's the deeds for that. I don't know how that happened, but. And also I noticed that he had surveyed the properties that the Board of Education does in the middle of that field and the property right next to it. But is the, is the library boundary showing what I think approach?
Yes. He's, he's pretty confident on showing that, that the accuracy of what you see there and where the building is. There is some degree of encroachment on that piece of property.
So as, as we move forward, I think it'd be good to clean up that part right in there as the boundary goes east there.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Those aren't too common, are they?
Okay, yeah, he's, yeah, obviously he's tracking and I think at some point we'll meet with Manager Cody and once we get that line issued. And I guess it's going to be a proposal that will be have to go to the work force to agree on if, if they can't end up finding any kind of line to speak of. That's all, that's really where we're at. 60% down with the survey. And that's really what, like I said, I gave mostly architects, our architect team, our all of the updates that we already had that was waiting on the survey to move forward with starting design, basically from scratch, more or less on the new facility placed on this spot. So survey's the big pinch point. That's all the way. We'll, we'll continue to work with them. And again, they were out today picking up utilities. I'll do an 811 just to make sure so that if there's anything new that the town doesn't have marked, we'll have that also. We'll go on the survey. We'll know where all that stuff is. Questions to that? Move on to Grand County Jail. As most of you know, they completed all the event services today, this morning and to clean up our haz, our hazmat consultant, which is Lou Daniel's group, came out. Soon as they were done, did their cleanup. They did their wipes to check for what, what was disturbed. It needs to be a reduction at a minimum. We want it to be real clean once, when they're done. And once they're done with that and with the rest of the work. Expect those results, samples, test results Thursday, Thursday afternoon or something like that. Obviously, if there's something that comes back and it's still heavy, they didn't clean enough. Guard will come back out and they'll do that again until we do reach clearance. And then we'll go in, architectural finishes will begin soon after that. I don't anticipate those starting probably before Thanksgiving, probably after the holiday. I, I would venture to say a week, once we get started, as long as there's no supply materials. We're waiting on our long lead items, we could probably get done with the, it's basically hanging two doors, two metal doors, the rush metal doors, the ones we took off and then trimming everything back out. But it stops back where they took them out and making sure they can seal back up in paint and then we'll hang. Good progress. They did a really good job. Our hazmat consultant was really impressed with what they did. Prior to, the chippers were saying they didn't want to walk on forwards, clean this property. It's been, so really did a good job for us. Be happy to get that job completed if that's something, you know, obviously work in. There's no questions with that. Move on to sanitation. The building was delivered on the six and completed inventory and everything. So it's there, ready to go up. Couple of things that are still driving, because we still need a plan in place to do away with the building and the survey. For that one line, I'm going to talk to Jesse again. Maybe you and I can talk tomorrow. There's, there's a problem with that line too. There's not a defined D that he's looking for on it. He thinks he's got some stuff for that west facing line, which is a Cody property where the building actually splits. So he's trying to figure that out as well. It's about done with that and we once we get that survey complete marked, obviously where the building is, we'll work with the plan on having to get it out of the way. Gavin's already started moving the stuff that's underneath the building. We can't demo anything, obviously, until we get the van issue, the all the materials that's in there. So waiting on that plan in place to go forward. And once we do, get the building out of the way. All these other things that I have in place, I received the structural engineering drawings for the, for the pier footings. Got that today. I don't know how with the civil run once I get the survey so that we can get other contractors in place to complete the work once everything is down. Electrical, we have to move some electrical issues to out of the building. Um, that exists, that's been existing for quite a while. Well, this is a good opportunity to get those split up, Cody property, county property in that town. Sewer dump tank that they have, that's what I was supposed to. So multiple things that we're working on that one, but obviously going forward, waiting on the survey. I, I was told by Jesse, well, there's, he thinks you can have that survey to me this week. So move forward soon again with that. That's now this item three. Then item four, we'll pour the grand project. I'll give you an update on, actually it's item four and five on the list. And then as before, we're going over to four, three, all right, 66 Atoa. Is this is a program that we're working with, dog with health trust funding and also first state statute. Trying to implement all those and we're working with frac funding, obviously. Sweetwater. So real close to being done, as you can see on the left side is the front. We're east elevation, basically steps and finishing the handrail and wrapping the posts for outside work. And then we have the crossface door that we got to do east elevation. But as you can see, real close to being done, they're doing site shaving and plant shaving. Almost done the plant is before Thanksgiving. We're trying to have that house complete. It's going to cut it close. It's going to be very clear next week. West elevation, the back, or the back of the house, you said, and again, they've been working on site shaving to get ready to do seating, grass seating. Obviously, we put in for temp service to have power connected this week. So we're also going to get that done. And units ready to be kicked off, run the unit for a day or two, get everything acclimated. And then finish whatever else, you know, like I said, they're, they're doing the finishes, architecture finishes now. More or less everything is installed, be allowed some, some touch of paint and setting all the plumbing fixtures and installing appliances which are on site. Little bit on the inside, as you can see, kitchen cabinets on the left, going inside, installing. Waiting on countertops, expecting countertops towards the end of the week. Just a little bit about the finishes on the, on the right is the master bedroom where you come in and then the left is going into the master bed. And I'll probably, once we get done with the house throughout, I'll do like I did on the previous show in room, each room. Once we get the, the protection floor powering up, you can see the finishes, the house has completed. Probably the next, next B. And show you a little bit where we are with 66 Atoa. South elevation of the shingle roof's already on, so that roof is being complete with this doors are in. They literally, I want to say they're a little bit back on the day. Pretty amazing to watch, actually. The same crew that did the roofing, Tom Scott, the, the building, the power building there with the horsewerries. They, they did that one in like two days. It's a huge building, pretty impressive crew. So they did a great job. And then any rough in on the left and electrical on the right. So all the rough ends, I think they call for inspection on it. So it's ready to go. So it's ready to go for, once they get, get it complete, get it, get it going inspection, that will consolidate, start issue inside. We're still on track to complete, I think, uh, two, four, three is showing ninety-three percent complete. And sixty-six is showing about fifty-eight percent complete. Where we want to get done and are any delays on anything, obviously we want to get done. No later than the end of the month for shooting for, before Thanksgiving, for two, four, three, or branch and then by Christmas for sixty-six, eight, oh. And the sign, I think they're gonna start on sixty-six, I think they're gonna start the final sign tomorrow. Shouldn't get outside to do that. That goes really relatively, so I think we're on track to do that as well. Hopefully by Christmas or four of Christmas. Any questions? Questions? Um, item six is new branch. The good news is we're just waiting on a grant agreement about the grant money before. With that, it'll be easier step than what we're doing previously. Um, we're just waiting on the agreement to turn the school loose. And that probably will get moved forward, so. I, I, you said, but December, I think you might be correct, because they're like December. The news there is to get that probably. Um, and then unfortunately on the high school stadium. We, they received one bid on the second bid and it was, it was like four one six million. Way out of the budget that they intended for the stadium, so. They're, they're gonna, the, the, the school that they're leading towards potentially may be. If we can go ahead and revend the project, give it more time because it was such short timelines for like still having bleachers built. And getting them, being able to have an introduction, get them here by the time the, the school's gonna be the, the field to play. That now we can give them a whole other year, so they're gonna be potentially pushing a year. Reading, reading our bleachers again this next year and then having everything ready for the twenty-second. So that's what they're leading towards in these schools. That'll be their decision, there's a little specific, unfortunately. I just think it was really, really short timelines to try to do, and getting the treatment, we get all the work done. And that's more or less it. Uh, just the last item, obviously with weather, stuff will continue to paint the harbor lots. I think that really worked well, so we'll continue doing that, you know, the weather being maybe more, seem more, a little bit more done. We'll get some done, but we're probably done before. If there's any questions for me, that's all. Thank.
As far as the LGC, um, you have an update, we have the community report. We, we probably do the latest report when we get to center and last month. And we have met with Paula and Beverly and RCPA and also T D L, so all you have to do is one thing. Always has been, she's been my, my best friend lately, so she, I, I know I couldn't have done it without her, her resources and just her knowledge. So, um, we just left the, um, North Carolina, um, Government Finance Officers Association in Cherokee for doing the, this agreement today. And also in your packets, you have got a budget to actual report. It shows, you have two separate packets, one that shows you the revenues and the others that shows you the expenditures. So our actual revenues today are six million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and one dollars and forty-six cents. And our actual expenditures today are six million, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents. So our expenditures, we would see our revenues at this point in time about five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-nine cents. Moving on to the next item, our property tax collections for the tax year twenty twenty-five. You've got a copy of October's report in your packet. Collections for the current year that were taken up in October were three hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. Collections in October for prior years were thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Our total collections for tax year twenty twenty-five to date is two million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, thirty-nine dollars and three cents. And the balance to be collected is seven million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty cents. So as of October, our collection percentage is twenty-two point nine percent. We do expect that to increase in the fall to continue prior to the January take deadline. As far as sales taxes concerned, you have a copy of the September report attached. And the September collections, those were paid in November, and the amount is three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. That brings our year-to-date collections to one million, forty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars. The school's allocation of the school's tax and their portion for, that from September's was fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. And that brings their year-to-date to two hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. And that leaves them within available balance of four hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-five cents. They do have several requests in front of us tonight, they're also in their packet. And they would like to utilize their sales tax money for, um, wait with in-service for repairs for a dishwasher at the elementary cafeteria. And smart pass, it's a bathroom pass system for the middle school and the high school. And they parked them, they need to switch for a new line in the lecturing, sitting wall, they have lots, number, uh, of the academy. And ritz refrigeration, refrigeration was taken care of in the cafeteria, first of the work at the elementary school. And the ritz refrigeration, also, um, we're working on the H B A C, the electric heat repair at central office. So their request total of fourteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. And we would need your approvals approaching the bathroom to support for those three spaces. And the quarter cent allocation for public safety in September, we set aside twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. And brings our total to date to one million, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy cents. As far as our variable tax collections, we have a copy of the October report attached. The October collections that were paid to November, fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and four cents. That brings our year-to-date collections to two hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifteen cents. That is all of the normal items, and I did want to bring them back to your attention and send you the talks at the last meeting in October. In regards to our public records request policy and request form, I just wanted to see if you could have the opportunity to review that. If you want us to put that into place, and we would need a motion to, to adopt that and put that into place.
And there's two items on there, I think we'll just skip the initial right now, those have been discussed, sort of budget most of the time. And the last item we leave on my list is, uh, we received a letter from the H S S. We have a copy of it in your packet, and we will acknowledge it to you as well, where it might have actually been acknowledged, but it was hard to record. And, and the H S S basically reviewed our audit results and that once they were posted and managed. They took a look at all of the corrective actions that we have identified in our, our S P S. And they had decided that we need to still give us a few things. So their main concern was our internal controls policy. So after, um, as, as I'm working with, um, the school government, you know, my, my certification course. And then they have provided a lot of resources that have these type policies in place. And so we can use them in a role and place to create out of ourselves. So as it works through the internal controls policy, it obviously led on a rabbit trail of, you know, my reference to several other policies. And that's what your big plan packet is, um, that would be updated internal controls policy, a pre-audit policy. A cash management policy, a funds balance policy, a procurement policy. A code of, a, a code of conduct or ethics for human staff, this is separate from the law that you take as a ward. Um, record retention and bespoke disposition schedule, unclaimed property policy, investment policy. Yearing processes, um, internal control of our inventories. Procedures for the disposal of surplus property, electronic payment policy and a wire transfer payment policy. And there's one more that got added, which is the, um. And this was the second item that they had identified was safeguarding unintended computers. So, um, we have created a policy as well, an internal controls policy for safeguarding unintended computers. And that was just one of the, um, items that, that we got things on while they were doing their audits. And so that was, we will, if, if this is approved, we'll get this out to the, um, to all of the staff to make sure that they understand it. We will have that probably maybe next year. So we do have to respond back to the H S S five at twenty-second. And I know that's a short deadline and it's a lot of policies, but I did want you to know that those are, um. Coming straight from the, is, you can see school government, they have what's called NC finances, a resource or finance officers. To be able to utilize their resources out there for these policies. So these policies have all come from there.
Say, I'm a big fan of, if the school government says you can do it a certain way, follow their rules, and you can never really be out of compliance. So, uh, that's the basis for all of it. So this month we have one thousand, two hundred and three dollars and fifty-two cents in releases. Discoveries and then, and the amount, eight of the direct, thirty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents, just need a motion to approve those. Second item, uh, sheriff's reached out requesting purchase of, uh, equipment. We have, um, the, the piece of equipment is a sidewalk side, uh, they plan to use to, um. Travel to or in, in pursuits and, and portions of the county there, uh, as easily accessible. It is from the, is, is kind of how it was presented from the discussion we had with the sheriff. Um, I've got, um, I've got a quote printed out that he actually sent me a, a more recent quote that is the cheaper option. Um, that I have not had a chance to print, but I will, um, tell you all, it is a twenty-five range, XR crew limited. Uh, it is a Kawasaki Sasa. Uh, the total amount is thirty-three thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. The other quote right here is for Polaris. Uh, it is forty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, uh, with. It's, it's, this is not such a good text from the representative who's communicating with saying, oh, what the bottom dollar we need. I don't have a detailed quote to see exactly what all the bells and whistles in that particular I M R. You know, with this, it does include some of the aftermarket upgrades, um, supplies, installation, things of that nature, so it's not. This appears to be. Request for a bigger machine that's gotta run at twenty thousand dollars. Um, that's something that, um, we have discussed priority as far as what should come first. And I think that's something he's wanting, the, the bigger machine is asked to table, so we, um. Yeah, the Kawasaki was, uh, the, 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 the more formal model, I didn't like ours was that moving points and supply. I'm trying to get, just for the record, a more formal quote, that we've got. On the record. Uh, next item, so we can skip C, that has already been taken care of. Uh, T is a new health, or is that health department fee? So there's a question in the health department to add. And I don't speak health department, so chair. Correct here. Um, there's a request to add a, you know, C P T code nine nine four nine five. Which is transitional care management services with borrowed medical decision-making complexity. Which includes a face-to-face visit with a patient within fourteen days of discharge and interactive contact within two business days of discharge. These services for patients transitioning from an inpatient setting, such as a hospital to a community setting like a home predicament facility, that's something that has been recommended by pure media as a service that can provide that, we can not get. We all have, uh, a code for it, we can build that service.
We've been providing services, I guess it wasn't needed.
Right, so that essentially would be unpaid service, that you cannot be paid because there's not a contract to, uh, for a fee. On a fee schedule for that particular service. Next item is the amended preventive maintenance plan for transit for twenty twenty-five. Uh, it's in your packet, you just get a motion to approve. Next item is, uh, another fee, this is for, uh, the building inspection department. So we don't currently have a fee, so a pitchball where Kiko King is the little there. Um, renovation project, the old San Fringe building, there's not currently a fee for, uh, a building of that size for renovation of that nature. Um, there has been, uh, proposed, so I think in, in previous, uh. Amendments to the fee schedule, but it's actually essentially followed the Jackson County, uh, model. Um, and that is forty cents per square foot. Um, however, there is a, uh, and Jacob can probably elaborate a little more on this and define. There is commonly a reduction for dead space, a, so there's two hundred and fifty-seven square, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand square feet. Is the total space of the renovation project, but about half of that project is actually not being, half of that square footage is not being touched. As part of the renovation. So the suggestion, this is from, um, our contracted abilities, I have to handle that. Tell me how I, correct me if, this last name, elders, um, recommended, uh. Give a couple of, a couple of possibilities, so it's forty cents per square foot with a zero percent, twenty percent, thirty percent, forty percent, or fifty percent reduction. Based on what he's, what you see as the dead space square footage, his recommendation is the fifty percent reduction for dead space. Uh, which would come up to fifty-one thousand, four hundred dollars, just the total fee. So that would just need to be a motion to approve, but there are options with that particular B, so. I think it would be a fee adoption, and in this particular circumstance, an adoption of what the percentage reduction for dead space would be, for the, for the overall building permanent fee for this particular adoption.
And the renovation was fifty.
Was it forty cents, was fifty percent of dead space, and his recommendation across the board was the forty percent per forty cents. Or square foot to be in line with, with Jackson County, that's very helpful. That's what I'm saying, is that, is that correct?
So then you can charge for it, yeah.
So the fifty percent reduction makes that fifty percent of the board.
Correct. And then, and that is, and this is all within kind of what they're considering based on. So with the two hundred and fifty-seven thousand square feet, they're still, they're not touching half of the building with this first phase. That fifty percent of dead space is within this footprint of what they're actually renovating as well, so. There's potential for additional renovation within phase one, and then what the second half of the building could also be. Yes, we would need a motion, uh, I have to go through the options that were proposed again at the board first. Or actually questions, whatever. Recommendation for selling is fifty percent, dollars, fifty percent. Next item, uh, next couple items are um, coordinate board members, and first, uh, health advisory board member. Those members are Carol Mel Sacks, Susan Sarder, James, and Tony Longier, uh, those are not current members, so these would be new members to that particular board. Uh, next is reappointing uh Sunny Gringle and Hamilton Boxer to the health advisory board. Is reappointing David Manley to the transit board. Is uh reappointing Pam Schaefer to the R B A board. Next is reappointing Taylor Megan to the T and T board. Next item is reappointing uh, coming more to the road, David Gordon. Next item is uh surplusing twenty-nineteen transit ban, so again, that's one-three-one-five. That's the last four, one-three-one-five, blue value is twenty-five, or two thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars.
Yeah, I'll need you to give us page. Yeah, that's what the blue value gave me on the blue, that you want to set that as the minimum price. There's a hundred and sixty-two thousand sixty-two miles.
That's all I have for session, I'm sure.